Good afternoon. My name's Joe Allinger. I am Vice President of the Board and I'll be chairing today's meeting. Mr. Fitzgerald is under the weather. I hope he has a speedy recovery. So, to get things started, Dr. Hanlon, I'll pass it on to you.
Okay. Good afternoon, and we're gonna start with our pledge to the flag, and I'd like to welcome our student pledge leader to the microphone. Melvin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And ladies and gentlemen, this is Melvin Harmon. And Melvin is a 4th grader at North Salisbury. Melvin, you did a great job.
Good job, Melvin. Thank you.
And you for the great job that you did. And I think you have someone here with you. Would you like to introduce?
Yeah. There is my mom, Travana Harmon. Hi, Mom.
Very nice job. Thank you for being with us.
Thank you, Melvin.
Thank you, Melvin.
Alright, 3.2, the approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All opposed in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? At our board meetings, we recognize those who have passed. And I didn't know Mr. Burgess, but I've asked Dr. Hanley if she could just have a few words about Mr. Burgess and his career with our school system.
Thank you so much, Mr. Allinger. Board members, superintendent, special guest, we were very honored to have Mr. Billy Burgess in our school system for a number of years, 35 years. His tenure was at James R. Bennett High School and at Wycomico County, at Wycomico High School. And we are very, very fortunate that many of us did have Mr. Burgess as a teacher, as art teacher. He made many lasting relationships with students who are now adults in our community. So, we are, of course, very sorrowful that he has passed, but we are very honored to have had his presence as an educator with us here.
Thank you, Dr. Handy. If we could have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. 3.4, recognition of students for designing holiday cards. Dr. Handy, or, I'm sorry, Dr. Hanley.
That's okay. Alright, thank you, Mr. Allinger. I'm very pleased to recognize students who are with us this afternoon who designed this year's holiday cards that are sent, some with hard copy versions of the cards and others electronically throughout our community to celebrate the holiday season. So, they are with us this afternoon, and I would like for them to come up and be recognized. And we have for them their own copies of their holiday cards to distribute. So, we have, from James M. Bennett High School, we have How Tran. And How's is, if anybody knows, this is How's card right here.
Yep.
From James M. Bennett.
Good job.
We have Crystal Cologne. And hers is in the upper left. And we have Shelby Long from Parkside. And hers is the Snow Blue.
Dr. Hanlon, as it shall be's wish that it snow, let it snow. That means snow days, right?
Very good. And finally, last but not least, we have Tony Herrera from Wycomico High School. I had the pleasure of selecting them without any names. They were grouped, obviously, by high schools so that I could select one from each high school. So, a lot of talented artists in our school system. You all were the chosen ones, so thank you very much.
For someone who has no talent at all in art, I am always blown away by these beautiful cards and the wonderful talent that you all possess. Great job. These are absolutely beautiful. Thank you.
One day we'll see Hallmark next to our name.
Mr. Vichia, please join.
Don't stand up there.
Really creepy face in the background.
Oh, I seen there, you been a little back and said, "Look, that's me." I'm between those people.
I smiled in case I am there. I smiled.
Alright, 3.5, presentation of leveled literacy intervention.
Okay, I'm gonna turn it over first to Mrs. Malone to introduce this topic. Dr. Handy and I talked earlier in the year about the importance of giving the board additional information about our intervention program that we use that you've heard so much about, the success of the program and the value it brings to our schools.
Dr. Hanlon, Mr. Allinger, members of the board, it is a pleasure to be here this afternoon, and thank you so much for the opportunity to focus a little bit of attention on a fundamental skill, regardless of the topic area, regardless of the grade level. The skill of reading is one that is a fundamental skill and is so important to our students. We are very fortunate to have experts here with us today, a principal, teacher, and two of our supervisors, all of them with expertise in the area of reading. We also recognize the continued partnership of our institutes of higher education who, again, connect with us, again, national experts in reading. And I say that by way of introduction because we are going to be sharing with you some of the data that we have about the reading skills of our students in our district, and some of the successes and some of the challenges we still face. And I would caution us to remember that the numbers and statistics make the situation, make the circumstances and make the topic seemingly easy to understand. Reading, reading acquisition, and particularly reading intervention when students are struggling to read is a very complicated issue. And we hope that this will be but the first of many conversations and many discussions that we can have surrounding this very, very critical and essential skill for all of our students to attain while they are with us and well beyond our schoolroom doors. So, with that, I would like to introduce both Ms. Paige Greenwood and Mrs. Patty Blevins and their guests so that we can discuss reading and reading intervention. Thank you again for giving us this time.
Thank you. And just so you know who's seated up here beside us, we have Kristin Cashman, who is a reading intervention teacher at Wycomico Middle School, and Dave Harris, who is principal at Fruitland Primary. I'm sure he is not an unfamiliar face to many of you there. And they're going to be joining us toward the end of the conversation to share some information that they have from their particular situations. I'm gonna go ahead and begin by welcoming you to our reading intervention program. We set this up like a book because we're talking about reading intervention, and that's what we're all about, is immersing our students in as much reading as possible. I'd like to thank the Board of Education for their support last year. We had a request for additional intervention positions, and we were able to fund those, and it is making a huge difference. Today, what we're going to talk about, and we have a brief time with you, we could spend hours talking about it, but brief time. We're gonna talk about what is called the RTI framework. And I don't know if you've received that handout or not, but I will be speaking about that. It's the Response to Intervention Framework. We're going to look at our menu of interventions that we have available in Wycomico County because LLI, or leveled literacy intervention, is one of those interventions. It is our most widely used intervention. But there are other interventions that are available for students depending on their disability or their area of need. We will delve deeply into leveled literacy intervention, and we will share with you, as we said, some of the data that we have been able to collect. First, we're going to talk about the Response to Intervention Framework. You have a blown-up model of this. The Response to Intervention Framework actually is a state model of intervention grown from a national model of intervention. And there are three tiers within that intervention. Tier 1, or the base of the triangle, is the tier where we expect for all students to receive high-quality instruction in all of the areas of English language arts, which includes reading, writing, speaking, and listening. That high-quality instruction within that tier 1 should also include differentiation. Differentiation so that we are meeting the needs of all students within that tier. The second tier, or tier 2, is, or would be where those students who are struggling or having some difficulties in certain areas of reading, where they would receive focused, targeted interventions to work particularly with the areas of need that have been diagnosed. Within tier 2, you can see that you would have approximately 5% to 10% of your population. In the national and in the state model, that is what we would expect to see. The group becomes small, 2 to 4 students, and students are met with 3 to 4 times or more per cycle, or per six-day cycle. And we engage in what is called progress monitoring, or frequent monitoring of the student's progress within the intervention as well as within the regular classroom. Tier 3 would be where those students are not responding, or are responding but are not making the kind of growth that we would expect them to make. Where those students, the amount of time would be increased, the group may be smaller, and the progress monitoring may be more frequent. The law requires that all students who struggle with any aspect of learning to read be placed in a research-based intervention prior to referral for special education. So, the purpose of that RTI framework, or Response to Intervention Framework, is to ensure that we are not referring students who we can remediate in some other way. So, within Wycomico County, we have actually a menu of interventions. In some cases, we know that the area of need is very focused. And when that area of need is focused, we then work within. I was feeling really good until you did that. Alright.
This is more my pay grade.
I do have the teacher voice, at least I thought I did. So, moving on to the menu of interventions with the microphone right there. One of the interventions that we have is Read Naturally, and you may have heard about this. And the purpose of Read Naturally is really to work with those students who have difficulties in the area of fluency. In other words, they are not reading as quickly as they should. Maybe they are missing some words. But the idea is that we build their fluency. That may sound like a simple thing, okay? And it can be easy to remediate if you catch it early and if you spend adequate time with it. But it is so important. I know we look at those park scores, and a student who is not fluent, who doesn't read at the speed where they should read, is not going to finish the park assessment because it's a timed assessment, or any other timed assessment. Foundations is another intervention. There's actually a suite of interventions that have been put together by what is called the Wilson Reading Company. They've been around for a long, long time. Foundations is one of those interventions. And the purpose of Foundations is to work specifically in the area of phonics and spelling. So, working together with learning the sounds of the language and being able to write the words. Wilson Reading is the parent company of the three that I'm speaking to you about right now, which is Wilson Reading Foundations and another one that I'll share. And Wilson Reading is really a very, very focused intervention, usually reserved for those students who have not responded well to other interventions and need a more focused approach in the area of spelling and writing. And Just Words is also very similar, but would be used in the middle school and high school level. So, these interventions are there for those students for whom we know they only have one area that needs remediation. But most of the time, what we find particularly with our early learners who are struggling is that they're struggling in more than one area. And so, that is where leveled literacy intervention comes in, better known in Wycomico as LLI, and across the nation, actually, as LLI. So, what you see there is sort of a suite of resources that are provided by the Heinemann Publishing Company and their authors, Irene Fountas and Gaisu Pennell, who are one of, two of the leading experts in reading across Wycomico, across the United States, as well as around the world. There are systems that progress from the orange system, which is our kindergarten system, all the way up to the teal system, which is around grade 6, usually. It can be used in lower grades, but it just depends. And when I say by the grade, it means for students who are reading at those grade levels. So, a student who is reading several years below grade level may be working in a system that is a bit lower than that. LLI is a holistic, focused intervention that really focuses on all of the areas. It focuses on phonics, it focuses on fluency, it focuses on comprehension, it includes writing. All of those pieces are addressed every day within the scope of the lesson. There are very engaging books that are used within it, so they're reading real text. And it really has a balance of both fiction and nonfiction, which is so important in terms of being able to be prepared for the real world. It's not just about reading fiction. We know how important that nonfiction is. The small group for LLI is a key. So, 3 students is really the recommended group size. We do work with 4 and occasionally more than that. But we really need to try to stay within the bounds of the recommendations of the publishers of the program. I'm gonna turn it over to Paige, and she's gonna talk to you a little bit about what students say about it and what teachers say about it.
I'm gonna try out for American Idol.
Alright.
As we know, one of the things about LLI and all the programs we're using in the county for reading intervention is that they are research-based. But, as we know, that research-based program is only as good as the people behind it. And those are our students who are receiving the services and then our teachers. So, we really wanted to get some feedback from both of those groups. And as you can see by some of the quotes, our students are absolutely loving LLI. They really have taken to the small group instruction, which, of course, any student would enjoy. But when you're asking a student to do something that they are struggling with, that's challenging for them, the small group is very, very important for them to feel that cohesiveness. They really do enjoy the text. If you look at the LLI text, it is so interesting. I mean, books from How They Make Chewing Gum to, you know, just these topics that students just love. And the students really do enjoy the discussion component. And I've been in many, many rooms where we're using reading intervention, and students who would not normally participate are feeling comfortable enough to participate because of a small group setting. And it's building their confidence. The other thing that is very important is that they are reading on their instructional level. So, while it may be, I think one student said, you know, "It's challenging but fun." That means we're hitting that target area. It should be challenging, but it also shouldn't be frustrating. So, we definitely make sure that we put students, they're tested before they get into the program so that they're placed in the appropriate kit. As you can see, also, teachers are enjoying the program and are, this is the first time I've been in Wycomico for a long time, and I've seen a lot of reading intervention programs come through the years. And this one, by far, has had the best results and the best reaction from students and teachers. The one thing that I notice that teachers are saying is that students' confidence level is building. And because of that, they are taking those skills that they learn in reading intervention and are moving those into their regular classrooms. So, I will hear teachers say, their science teachers say, you know, "Johnny never participated," or "Never would read," or, you know, "He would be disruptive, but now he's participating and he's being part of the class because of this confidence and an increased skill level." So, I think for the first time, we're really seeing it spill over into other subject areas, which is important. Now, Patty's gonna talk to you a little bit about the data. We're just doing it very quickly because of time constraints, and then I'll talk about middle school data.
Alright, I'll give this a try, too. I don't know how I'm gonna work with this. As you know, there are approximately 1,200 students per grade level in Wycomico County in each grade, with the exception of grade 5, where it drops to around 900. This chart shows the number of students right now who are participating in, I'm sorry, the number of students right now who are reading below grade level in Wycomico County as measured by the measures that you see there. So, let me see if I can explain those very quickly to you. For grades 1 and 2, the measure that we use was our Fall Benchmark Assessment System. That is an assessment that is administered one-on-one to students so that teachers are able to get a really good handle on what areas of need exist and at what levels they are reading. And that was from this fall, which we do administer it in the fall in Wycomico. In grade 3, you'll see that I use the Spring Bass, the Spring Benchmark Assessment System, because we do not administer that in 3rd grade at the beginning of the year. We are making a switch there from using the Benchmark Assessment System district-wide to using SRI, Scholastic Reading Inventory, as our main assessment. So, you can see the number there. And then for grades 4 and 5, we use the Spring Scholastic Reading Inventory Score, which was the most recent score that we had in preparing the presentation. So, you can clearly see the challenge that we still have in terms of the number of students who are reading below grade level. And it begins very, very early. I made a pitch last year for focusing on early intervention, and it is so, so key to moving our students to where they need to be. One of the things, one of the hurdles that we face is that we have some preliminary kindergarten readiness assessment, KRA, data, which we have not been allowed to share at this point. It's still embargoed and still being discussed at Dr. Hanlon's level. But what we do know is that it shows us that the challenges are still there. They are still there. They have not gone away. And so, that is a hurdle that we try to get over when you have a large percentage of your students entering kindergarten who are struggling with some of the basic things that you might think that you, as a child, knew when you entered school. Probably not in kindergarten, if you're like me. You probably entered in 1st grade. There was no such thing as kindergarten. But we really are struggling with that. And so, we have to keep that in mind as we look at the data and the number of students who are reading below grade level. In the elementary school, we currently have 1,196 students who are participating in LLI. That is across grades K through 5. Read Naturally, Foundations, and Wilson, as you can see, there are many fewer students participating there because what we know is that so many of our students are needing assistance in more than just that focused area in which those interventions would apply. We are, one of the things that we must do, and we are working very hard to do, is to ensure that in that RTI triangle, what did I tell you was so important? Tier 1 instruction. That tier 1 instruction, that classroom instruction, must be exemplary. It must be. And so, that is, we know that, and we're focused on that through our observation process. And we are having some difficult conversations at times with teachers, and we're able to celebrate with many of our teachers. And we're very, very pleased to be able to see the progress that we're seeing in terms of tier 1 instruction. So, the additional 7.5 intervention positions, I believe, are making a difference. The hurdle is still huge. We clearly have 50.2% of our students who are reading below grade level who are enrolled in interventions. So, we have 48.8, if I did my math correctly, I'm not sure, but students who need intervention or may need intervention because some of those students are really maybe only 1 or 2 points away from being proficient in an area. But clearly, a hurdle that we must jump.
So, oh, I'm sorry. Can I ask?
I thought we took that.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Alright, Paige is going to show you a little bit of LLI in action and then share some additional information with you.
Okay, we just wanted to show you a very short clip of what it looks like in action for a teacher doing LLI. Just to give you a little background, the students in this small group, they're 3 or 4, they have just finished reading one of the books from the LLI kit, and they're working on word work with the teacher. She would be looking at syllables, patterns of syllables, and vowel sounds and that kind of thing. So, we wanted to just give you a little snippet of what that would be like. Maybe I don't know how to do this.
Words, would you use vowel sounds? Multi-syllable, let's break that down. Multi means what?
More than one.
A lot, more than one. Syllables are the sounds we hear in words, right? The patterns that we hear. So, let's look back at 177. We looked at multi-syllable words. Those had long vowel sounds. So, Ethan, give me an example of a multi-syllable word with a long vowel sound.
Um, row.
Row, boat. How many syllables do you hear? Row, boat.
Two.
And what vowel sounds do you hear? Row, boat.
O.
The long O sound. This time, we're not gonna hear those long or short vowel sounds. We're going to hear unique vowel sounds. What does unique mean? When you think of unique, Michael, what do you think of? Kind of different, unusual, right? So, these words, we're not gonna hear A, E, I, O, U, or A, S, I, T, H, U. We're gonna hear strange sounds in them. So, let's look at a couple examples.
Okay, I apologize for the poor quality, but we wanted to kind of give you the gist of what this looks like in action. This happens to be a middle school classroom in our reading lab, which Kristin's gonna speak to in a minute. After this occurs, then the students would be reading another book, and they would actually be looking for the vowel sounds and the patterns in the upcoming book. So, it really all works together, and then, and they move at a very fast pace. Students are reading multiple books in a very quick turnaround. When we're looking at the data for middle school, last year, we had over 400 students enrolled in LLI, and with the addition of multiple staff members as well as some creative scheduling, we've been able to increase that number quite a bit. We still do have students enrolled in our Wilson and Read Naturally, as well as some other programs. I am a strong believer of if a student qualifies for the program, we need to put them in the program they qualify for. We don't just put them in a program because it's the one we have available to us. So, we do have the other programs, but as you can see, most of our students do qualify for LLI. for LLI. Last year, we had over, just a little over 500, and this year, we have about 700 total students in middle school, six, seven, and eight, enrolled in reading intervention. So while it is still a challenge for us to help all our students, we are chipping away at it. And we are doing this by being very, very creative in our schools. We are looking at scheduling. We are looking at utilizing as many staff members as we can that are qualified. We have provided intensive training for teachers that are involved in LLI. This has actually been a joint effort, started out as a joint effort between special ed and general ed, and we have involved all of those staff members. So I'm really proud to say that we have brought everybody together in this effort to help meet the needs of our students. The last part of the data is just some very basic but general data. We are seeing quite a bit of gains in our data as we look at different kinds. We look at the SRI. We look at, we'll be looking at Park as we get that information. You know, we had that transition year from MSA, so it's sometimes not comparing apples to apples in a lot of ways, but we are tracking the data pretty consistently. And as you can see, even though we're making gains, we still have, still some students that need intervention. And it's always my hope that we can increase staffing or whatever the needs that would help have us meet, you know, all of our students that need our help. Last year, we had quite a few teachers involved in intervention, and this is just at the middle school level. So this year, we've really gained quite a few staffing positions. And as I said, it was creative scheduling on the parts of our principals that really have made this happen. So I'm going to turn the last part out to Patty to kind of end the presentation.
We're missing it. So there should be a page that says, "The next chapter." And the next chapter is that we need to continue to progress, monitor our students. We need to continue to ensure very, very effective tier one instruction, and we need to continue to work with our families in terms of how they can help us at home and how we can help them as partners here in the school. We're going to end with some comments from Mrs. Cashman and Mr. Harris from the teacher's perspective and the principal's perspective.
I want to rock, paper, scissors for this. I'm Kristin Cashman. I am the reading lab, reading intervention teacher at Wycomico Middle School. This is my passion, and if I get emotional, I apologize. Our lab at our school runs all eight periods, 45 minutes each period a day. We have 36 groups coming in and out of my room. I have 17 minutes of peace a day. That is it.
Thank you.
15 teachers are working in our lab, and those numbers are actually greater than some of the other middle schools because they run things a little bit differently than we do. It all works, but it all works differently at each school, which is wonderful. The 15 teachers that are involved in my school personally, we are a family, and please come and witness the organized, beautiful chaos that goes on in that room every day. The kids have bought in because we are a family, and they have bought in across the county. In my lab, we yell across the room at each other if we need help. If one group is not getting something, we'll rely on another group to get it. It's just a wonderful family experience in the reading lab, the way we run it. And I hear the same thing from the other, the other schools in the county. The teachers, we are going to win jeopardy someday because of the knowledge that the teachers are gaining as far as words and the stories and the things that we're learning. The number one thing that teachers across the county that are working, in LLI especially, are saying, they now can individually diagnose a student, and they could do it in two seconds in a history class when they're sitting next to their special ed students. And because of the training that they've received in LLI especially, they are able to help students that are not reading intervention students in a general classroom setting, which is absolutely phenomenal. I really will go on a limb and say they've never been able to do that before. I don't know if you would agree, but I'm 100% in agreement with that. We are meeting at Wycomico Middle School, every special ed student. We are meeting their accommodations in our reading lab, which is overwhelming that we are able to do that in one small middle school. Our ELA classes are grouped based on needs, reading needs. It is an absolute disaster trying to get it scheduled, but within those needs, because we have groups all reading at certain levels, we also have individual needs. I could have two Level Ls coming down to my lab at the same time, but this Level L has a fluency focus, and this Level L has a totally different focus. The amount of teachers that I have allow us that flexibility. So when a kid needs to move up a level, or if we're like, ooh, we probably need to back it down, we can do that within a class, and we don't have to do a massive schedule change. There are those outliers where sometimes we do have to do that massive schedule change because either they've soared past our expectations, or we might need to back some things down a little bit. But I would say 99% of the time, every time we move a child up a level, it happens within that classroom, which is wonderful. I just thank you for your support of the elementary positions that we were given because I might be without a job someday, but it's what's in the best interest of students. And every teacher and every decision that we make for these reading lab students are in the best interest of the students, and everybody in my building has bought into it, and it is absolutely phenomenal.
You can hear her passion. Kristin, we all know here that reading is a foundational skill. We all know that our students will not be successful in any measure of formalized assessment or in many life skills without that ability to read. And what I want to show you right now, if we flip to the blue and orange paper, is where the numbers tell the story here. If we're looking for a bang-for-your-buck strategy and something that is working, I'm hoping this data will show you that. Our kids are coming from a plethora of pre-kindergarten experiences, some with no experience whatsoever, some to our formal county experiences, which are truly wonderful. Considering that, we're teaching some kids how to be students the moment they walk through the door in kindergarten, recognize letters or so on. What does that amount to? That amounts to, at a school like Fruitland Primary, by the time we get to January, only 30% of our kids are actually reading on grade level because of all of the other skills that we're having to catch up and focus on. I will say, many of that majority, that 30%, are coming from county-driven pre-K programs, which is fantastic. So considering that, we have a goal at Fruitland to get our students reading on grade level by second grade. We look at it instead of a one-year goal, a three-year goal. How can we chip away at this? And before we send them to the intermediate school, have our students reading on grade level. Three years ago, when Dr. Hall and I came together as the administrative team at Fruitland Primary, you see the numbers right here. 2014, we sent only 56% of our students were reading on grade level that spring before we came together as the team there. 56% to Fruitland Intermediate reading on grade level. You see, with the implementation and expansion of our intervention programs and the formal expansion of our LLI program, that following year, you can see that increase up to 83%. That speaks. Keeping along that process, 82%. You can see going into this coming year, 2016, last year, we were granted a full-time reading intervention teacher. We were one of those seven. Thank you so much. Look at where our kids started this year compared to the years prior, too, as an 11% increase. Those numbers speak. That is an investment worth the money. You get on further, and you look at our free introduced meal students, because it's not reading, and I could probably put all numbers down, as you see at the top, but our free introduced meal students, we know that's been an obstacle. 2013, that school year, there was no growth in reading skills within that cohort of students. None. 38% is where it started, 38% is where it's ended. And expanding our intervention and LLI programs in the 2014 school year, you see that 12% to 13% increase, and that has been able to maintain throughout, you know, throughout the implementation of the program. But it does take resources. And when you flip over on the backside of the paper, we've talked about right now, the county model for RTI is 10% in tier two, which is where LLI would probably fall in tier two. The national model is starting to sway as high as 15%. Even some models say 20% are in need of services. When you look down the chart at the bottom and look at the number of students who are needing intervention, just by the basic math of 5 in 15%, you see the number of students that would be needing services. You see the number of groups that that would be if you're providing these services to three to four students at a time. 45 minutes is each session every day. You see the number of intervention teachers that are needed in a school based on those numbers. And then you also have some quotes there on the bottom of the page that are from our classroom teachers themselves on how they feel about the program. So I'm going to end with that, but know that it starts with early childhood, and we're seeing some great growth. It is worth the investment.
Are you taking questions?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead. I do have a question. On your elementary school data slide, where you see 50% of students reading below grade level are enrolled in intervention as of December 16th, is that indicating that there's another 1,275 students that are not receiving any type of intervention?
I couldn't give you the specific number. The numbers that are on that slide are actually the numbers of students who are enrolled in interventions, which equates to 50, which equates to 50.2%.
So that does indicate?
It does indicate that there are probably a similar number who are not receiving intervention outside of high-quality, tier one instruction and differentiated instruction within the classroom. That's not to say that in January, okay, in February, as some of the students perhaps are able to move out of LLI, some spots will open and students can enter. But we cannot, with the current intervention staff that we have, meet the needs of all the students who need focused interventions.
So your holdup then is lack of staffing?
Lack of staffing.
And middle school is in the same boat with numbers. I mean, my school alone, overall, I think 58% of students needing intervention are not receiving it at Y Middle.
I'm at 32% at Fruitland.
So overall, the middle schools, 35% still need intervention. That's overall. So what happens to those students as they don't get intervention? Then they can't, they're going to struggle in all academic subjects, right? Because they're not going to be able to.
How do you choose who gets it and who doesn't?
We do testing. I mean, it's, it's.
Based on need?
I mean, you have a personal story that you could, can I share that you?
Yeah, go ahead.
He had to not put his own son in. This is what gets me. This is what chokes me up is, yes, we are, we're doing phenomenal work with what we can do, but to go to bed at night and not be able to touch that 58% walking through. And when I have kids saying, "When can I get in here?", I don't have an answer. So, and our classroom teachers are doing a much better job of saying, "Can you please take a look? Can you test? Can you test? Can you test?"" And again, I am the only full-time one of me in my building, so in addition to teaching and testing and overseeing the lab, I have to, you know, have some hard conversations with parents and students and.
So a million things are running through my head. I mean, what you all are doing is amazing, but so if you, if I was Santa Claus and could give you all the intervention teachers you wanted, how many, I mean, how many more would we need? Isn't this sort of like you pay now or pay later?
Well, then you got to, you got to puff and give us some more rooms, too. Can you do that?
I wish it was that easy with people.
I'll find room.
You should never, you should always be careful what you ask, but.
But let me also be quite clear of something that was said earlier, and that is tier one. Tier one is extremely important because tier one, that's where the classroom teacher is the one where that first, of course, direct teaching begins of reading. And so we need to, and we have been, doing a lot of professional development and guidance at tier one, classroom teacher, because the more we can strengthen the program at tier one, hopefully, the less number of students will need a separate reading intervention program. So tier one, that teacher with whom those students spend the most time is critical. So yes, we have been doing a lot at tier one to help teachers become more proficient in teaching reading.
If we're really good at the tier one, then you need fewer interventions, and then you have fewer special ed.
Absolutely.
Okay? So it's a, it's a climbing.
And expanding in the early childhood range. You know, the more kindergartners that we can get to, the more first graders we can get to, and get those fires out now is going to fit middle and.
And full-time pre-kindergarten, going after that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Because that's what Mrs. Blevins said, that the problem still is they come to kindergarten ill-prepared. So we have to get to that in order.
That's why we're at that 30% in January.
Okay.
And I think it's only fair to say for our new board members who haven't been with us for some years, that the folks at this table represent the driving force between trying to get us more reading intervention teachers. Dave Harris has been a spokesman for that at budget time for four, five years in a row. Know the work that Kristin does and her heart for what she does. And Margot's comment, so much on target. Tier one, quality classroom instruction with teachers who can focus on reading needs, reduce the number of intervention students that will go in your very attractive classroom for students because of the atmosphere that's created there. But there are always those who are going to need that intervention, and we've made some strides forward, but we need to make further strides. And that budget time is in front of us, so your program is most appropriate.
I think it's also important to point out again what Mrs. Blevins mentioned, and that is the number of students who are coming to us, not ready to learn. And I'm not trying to place blame anywhere. I'm saying that this is a community problem. The kindergarten readiness aggregate scores have been released by the state board, and we are near the bottom again with the number of kindergartners in reading, speaking specifically to reading. We have about 75% of our kindergartners who are not where they should be when they enter kindergarten in reading, and it's worse than that in math. So what that requires us to do, we'll soon be getting the disaggregated results from the kindergarten readiness assessment that will tell us not only how they're doing in the different areas that are measured, it'll also give us information about demographics, but it will also tell us how are, how are the results looking by pre-K program, whether it be our own pre-K or whether it be community pre-K. I've heard some really good stories from Dr. Handy and others about a collaboration that we have between Head Start and Wycomico County Public Schools, where we're really talking to each other about the importance of classroom instruction and how we meet the needs of students at that very early age. So it's, it is very important that we're doing what we need to be doing in kindergarten in first and second grade, but it's before that that we need to really make sure that we're focused upon.
Absolutely true. Yep. I have a question for Mr. Harris as a principal. What do you do to improve tier one? I mean, you still have the same teachers, I assume, pretty much year after year, so what do you do to improve tier one, if anything?
Sure, sure. Quite a bit of professional development, but also grouping practices. We've looked at grouping practices quite a bit. In certain schools, certain grouping practices work. You know, we could say that a homogeneous group works for the highest achievers, but that's really the only subgroup of students that that works for. So in looking at a more equally-based heterogeneous group or a hybrid cluster grouping, which is what we do at Fruitland, so you're, the teacher's differentiating, but maybe not differentiating along such a wide spectrum of skills. So it's helping them fine-tune and specify their instruction for their students' needs. We found a lot of success at that with FBS over the past three and a half years.
Is there anything being done to close the achievement gap with these programs?
That certainly is our hope. We, I am a firm believer in the earlier we intervene, the better off we are going to be. And when we're looking at closing the achievement gap, I think we have to start there. I think closing the achievement gap goes beyond just being placed in the appropriate intervention. I think it goes back again to tier one. It goes to relationships that teachers have with students. There are so many factors that affect that, but certainly, I do believe that it absolutely is important in being able to narrow the achievement gap that we currently have.
Well, it's more than important.
It's essential.
If you get students reading on grade level, I will guarantee you the achievement gap. I will guarantee you the achievement gap will close. So this program is focused right on closing the achievement gap. If we can lift the students who are below reading level to their grade-level reading expectation, then the work on achievement tests will absolutely improve.
One of the slides that we skipped through on there was actually a home report that is used particularly in the primary levels of LLI, where there's a report that goes home to the parent. Every student in LLI has work to do, at least in the primary grades, at home. It is a part of, they must read their book to someone and talk about that book. And so parents sign off on that homework. And some of the comments that are on that, and you probably have it on your copy, you have the PowerPoint there, where parents are talking about, they become very knowledgeable, not only about whether their child is able to fluently read the text, but they become very knowledgeable in, oh, they're leaving off the endings. Some parents said, "They keep leaving off the endings." So they're becoming their own diagnosticians. So that a home piece is just so, so important.
Is your school representative of all the other elementary schools that they are seeing similar improvements like this bar graph that you've shown us?
I'm sorry, I don't have their data or access to it.
I would say that we're having similar results across, as far and across K through the middle school. And I just want to make a statement. You know, my job is to promote middle school and anything for middle school students, but I will say that I absolutely agree with Patty. Helping them early is going to help us in middle school. And, you know, so if we have to make those hard decisions, I absolutely believe they need to be made in those areas. As much as I would like to build my program at the middle school level, my dream one day is to not need a reading lab, is to not need reading intervention in middle school. But right now, we are trying to do what we can. As I keep saying to, you know, they outnumber us right now. And until we can build our staff to address the number of students we have, we will still continue with the challenge. But I do support all of our efforts in the primary grades.
But the positive comment is that we are moving in the right-
Yes.
Not as fast as we want to, but from where we were five years ago-
Absolutely.
-to where we are today, we are moving in the right direction.
When you talked about how important it was for the home gain to help improve with the stats, I had something positive encouragement Saturday with reading. Now, I've been told that the books are gone by the wayside. Everybody's going to the handheld devices and all. Let me tell you, Saturday, I was at Barnes and Noble's. It was crowded. There had been at least three dozen little kids in there, I mean kindergarten or pre-kindergarten. Every one of them had a book in their hands, and every one of them was excited about having that book in their hands. So that made me feel real good because they had a book and not that handheld device.
Thank you for sharing. Thank you.
Dr. Handlin, as you know, what we, what we look for from the board are these Park scores. You know, that's kind of our bottom line. It's sort of like when you run a business, you look at the profit. What's the profit? Well, our profit for this organization is Park scores, as far as I'm concerned, in graduation rates. So I would hope that what's taken place here, we're going to see a difference on the Park scores. That's number one. Secondly, I think if you could present to the board that said, "Okay, if we spend this much more money on doing this, whatever it is, you know, to increase, you know, our scores and continue to see these dramatic improvements, you know, you're going to capture my interest with the caveat that you're kind of guaranteeing to us if we spend the money." If you spend the money and you, the board, are willing to, you know, pony up, then I'm all for it. But I would like to see some sort of plan. I realize there's a point of diminishing returns, okay? But I want to see, what I would like to see is what is it we can spend to continue to get these dramatically-
Well, I will tell you that when I first presented Park scores to the administrators when they first were released, I asked the group, "What if you could name something that made a difference? What would it be?". And that's what I heard, these reading intervention positions. I think we have to be careful, and I know Margot, Dr. Handy has emphasized this, that our ultimate goal is to have quality classroom instruction. So what we're doing now is we're really playing a lot of catch-up. And I think we owe it to students. We can't afford to just leave these middle school students because we know the emphasis needs to be. So we're playing catch-up, and I'll work on that guarantee plan. I just want to say that I know we've spent probably a lot more time on this than we anticipated spending, but I think it's been quality conversation, important conversation for the board to hear what we're doing, the expertise that we have in the individuals who work in our school system. And I appreciate so much the time that you all put in to working with our young people and with our teachers and the time that you put into preparing the presentations. So thank you.
I'd like to thank you for inviting us to share with you, and I'd be happy to share with you more information at any time.
It was time well worth all of us. Because when I first saw this in our reading, I assumed that this was at the elementary level. I mean, I don't think the normal person in the community, and as a new board member, would think that we have to do reading intervention to this level at middle school.
Yes, we do.
It's an eye-opening experience that all community members should understand. Because when they want to know where the money needs to go-
Well, and I think it's important that we didn't even give you grade levels.
That Wilson program that I teach, we have two Wilson groups. That's kindergarten-level students in the middle school. So the highest student that comes into my reading lab is about a fifth-grade reading level.
Wow.
And those gains in middle school, the older a child gets, those gains are a lot smaller. So your payback on Park, right now, these kids, we need to make them functionally literate. And I think that that's where we need to be very cognizant of that's what our job is right now, because elementary, I would love to see those jumps that those guys get. I'll never see that because, you know, they're older students and they have a lot more, I mean, cat.
Right.
We've got a lot of catching up to do.
And to your point, Jean, I wonder, the community, future parents, what can we do to get parents more involved earlier so that, what can we do?
Read to your child an hour every night? Didn't I read that somewhere? Dr. Handy taught me that. See, I do retain things that you tell me.
This is a topic that's near and dear to my husband, and he will be walking in the grocery store, and he'll comment to parents who he hears having conversations with young kids about what they're buying and how important that building vocabulary is. So I think the more that we can do that and encourage the community's understanding that that very simple thing, just having continuous conversation to build background knowledge and vocabulary is so critical with young, really young children, so.
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Before Mr. Harris leaves, I'd like to just comment about the Christmas parade. You know, in, right in the middle, we had our superintendent up on the school bus, and on the right-hand side of the bus, we had Where's Waldo?, which was Mr. Harris. Did a great job. That's right, along with some of his teachers that did a wonderful job. And on the left side of the bus, the most popular figure, I think, was Mr. Willie. I mean, he caught a lot of attention there, so anyway, it was a great time.
Waldo was the most popular.
Yes, I believe that, true.
Very good. And we won the award. That's great. All right, we have the student representatives to the board report 3.6, and I guess we'll start with Laura Tonner.
Laura, can you come sit here, please? Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Olinger, Dr. Handlin, and other members of the board. I'm Laura Tonner from Bennett High School. Last week at Bennett, we had voting during our lunch shifts for the Christmas trees that were decorated by clubs in the school. Students were able to use their spirit change to vote on their favorite of the 10 trees that we had. And that fundraiser brought in $61, and the money is all going to the United Way. Sunrise, our faith-based partner, is going to take the trees and distribute them to needy families in the community. We currently are putting on a sock drive that ends tomorrow. Students and staff are able to bring in new or good-conditioned, clean socks to donate to an organization called From Roots to Wings. On December 9th, we had a hat day. If students or staff donated at least $1 to benefit the United Way, they were able to wear a hat for the day, and that fundraiser raised $33. And last Thursday, we had our SGA General Assembly and discussed our Winter Spirit Days, which will be the week of January 30th. We plan to do upperclassmen versus lowerclassmen wars again, like we did last year, because it brought such an increased amount of participation last year. And lastly, our class officers have been planning some events. The freshmen are planning some restaurant fundraisers. The sophomores are planning a spring dodgeball tournament, and the juniors are selling candy cane grams this week. And the seniors are planning prom, which will have the theme International Red Carpet. I also wanted to note that our United Way fundraisers have brought in almost $160, which we're very excited to donate to them. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you, Laura.
For a nice report.
And from Mardella High School, we have Leah Fitz.
Good afternoon, Superintendent Handlin, Vice President Olinger, and the rest of the members of the board.
Good afternoon.
I'm going to start off talking about Mardella Marching Band. Within the past couple weeks, we have represented at the Pokemont Hallsbury and Cambridge Christmas Parades playing Carol of the Bells. And at the Pokemont Christmas Parade, we placed as grand champions. And on another note, we have two students, Hunter Wirth and Mitchell Adams, and they were selected to play at Carnegie Hall. And that will be this upcoming spring, which is a very, very proud achievement for Mardella.
Yes.
And actually, today, the band is performing for the students along with the chorus during sixth and seventh period, and they will soon go over to the elementary school and perform their music. For middle school, we have the math team, and they placed third in the middle school math competition this year. Remodeling has taken over Mardella. We first have the track and field, they're being worked on, and it looks like there is mountains at Mardella, big piles of dirt. And the media center, they have started to remodel that, and it is set to be completed after the holiday break. For chorus, our music department has started and almost completed the auditions for the upcoming musical, high school musical. And this Friday, December 16th, will be Ugly Sweater Day, and we will also be having Hat Day. And students are paying for a sticker, and they can wear like reindeer antlers or Santa hats. SGA is still selling magnets. Here's a picture. If you guys want any magnets, they're $3 each. And for the future, we are putting together a winter dance, which will be held February 10th, and the prospective theme is Winter Wonderland. Okay? Any questions?
Where do you get the ugly sweaters?
Your grandmother's, maybe. Grandmothers have lots of them. Lots of them.
You do know this is on TV, right?
Yeah, if not boskobs, boskobs have lots of them.
Very good.
Grandma's-
Thank you, Leah. What a nice report. Thank you for sharing with us.
Thank you.
From Parkside, we have Patrick Temple.
Good afternoon, board members and everyone here today. On behalf of Parkside, I would like to wish Mr. Fitzgerald a speedy recovery.
Absolutely.
And at Parkside currently, we, last week, we had the SU onsite admissions, and I'm glad to say that 23 of our senior class members got accepted to SU, which is a great accomplishment for our school.
Absolutely great.
Wonderful.
We also participated in the climate survey in order to make the environment safer and better for learning. Our winter sports seasons have all begun, and the Parkside Green Machine was featured on WMDT News last night with our whiteout of the Y-Hi game, which we won. And we actually have an Ugly Sweater Day coming up for our Thursday game against Bennett. And I actually did get my ugly sweater from my grandmother, but I'm hoping she's not watching this.
I bet she'll watch it later.
It's pretty ugly.
Don't dig any deeper. You're digging an apple.
I gotta stop. We decorated Christmas trees, which have a silent auction that ends tonight at the holiday concert, and the proceeds go to the Bless Our Children Foundation. And Parkside's been doing that for over 30 years, and normally, we donate it to families in need, but because of the difficulty of finding families in need and deciding which ones to give it to, we decided that the Bless Our Children campaign would be the best way to go with that. Our Secret Santa is another thing we have going on at the holiday hour, and it's a teacher-run campaign, and it gives gifts and food to needy families within the school. And that's a little bit easier to pick because it's run by the teachers, and they know who really needs it. Our, regarding the LLI program, I actually spoke with Dr. Handlin a couple weeks ago regarding Parkside's Literacy Focus. We're actually the only high school in the county to put an above-and-beyond initiative on that. And we really try and focus on the tier-one implementation that Dr. Handy was talking about. And it's, the results are based on the SRI and the, what's the other test that we were just talking about? The Park Test, thank you. Sorry, it escaped. And we've shown improvements by a couple percentage points. And I think the biggest thing we need is an increased communication between the teachers and the students, because especially at the high school level, you get students that know a little bit more about what they're being taught. And a lot of the kids get turned off by the big SRI test and having to sit down for 30 minutes and take a test that they don't really think impacts their future at all. But it shows a lot about what's going on within the school systems, and I think we have to get the teachers on the same page as the administration to encourage the test and encourage the students to do the best that they can. And in our English class this year, based on just the increased communication, we actually were responsible for developing a lesson to teach to our peers, and I think that gave me an increased appreciation of what the teachers have to go through to develop not only a good lesson, but an interactive and an enjoyable lesson. And I think the biggest thing with literacy focus is to have a lesson that's very inclusive of all students. You don't want to single students out because the most important part of literacy is getting everyone involved. Even leaving one or two students behind ends up hurting everyone in the long run, because you can't do the lessons that you would need to do to be able to improve everybody's literacy. And just the, you can't be worried about necessarily stepping on the toes of teachers and other administrators within the thing, because the most important part of the whole process is improving the community for the students and giving them the best education that they can get. And if that takes extra professional development, or if that takes extra communication and extra time on behalf of the teachers and the administration, so I think it's 100% worth it in the long run to get the best possible product out there for the students. And that's really the only reason that any of us here do what we're doing. And thank you all very much for listening to my little spiel about what's going on at Parkside.
Patrick, are you going to please go to college and become a teacher and come back, please, and teach literacy?
I don't know about that.
You seem to know exactly what it is that students need and how to do it. I'm very impressed.
Yeah, I've been blessed to be able to sit on the ILT meetings that last quite a while, and you learn a lot about what's going on at the school.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Patrick, your insights are welcomed by the board. To hear student insight has always been so valuable to us. Thank you for sharing today.
Thank you. And from Wycomico High School, we have Katie Beach.
Good afternoon, Dr. Handlin and the rest of the board. As you said, my name is Katie, and I'm representing Wycomico High School. Through November, we did blood drive, and we had over 65 people participate, so yay. We did not, we had barely anyone sign up, and there were a lot of, there was a rush of 100 people at lunch, and we had to turn some people away and ask them to come later. So I was like, yay, people actually listened, and they came through announcements and everything. So I felt really proud. Our SGA is continuing fundraisers along with our other clubs. Our National Honor Society's do Salvation Army through November- Um, our National Honor Societies do Salvation Army through November, um, through December. So we are doing December twenty-second and twenty-third. Our National Honor Societies come together, and we all go to the Salvation Army, and we help, um, parents and students, um, get toys and food through the Salvation Army. You like go through a little, like, train and get presents for your kids and everything, and then they get wrapped, and you go off, um, with food at the end. Um, during our last ILT meeting, we focused on college and career readiness awareness. We're making posters, putting them out throughout the school. Um, we're also focusing on bully awareness, which is made, all the posters are being made by VPA Art. Um, we, thank you, VPA Art. Um, we are focusing on PBIS and through our classroom instruction PBIS days. So every, um, month, one day is picked out for teachers to focus on one subject. So it was, um, respect was November's thing. So it was like, how do you show respect in a classroom? How do you show it outside of school, inside of school, in every way, um, possible? Um, our next, we're, also, we focused on our next school-wide incentive for second term, and we are increasing our required GPA to go to a two-point-seven-five instead of a two-point-oh, to hopefully encourage students to get a higher GPA. Um, our clubs have sent out all of our acceptance letters, and when we'll be having induction ceremonies in the spring, so it's really exciting. We had seventy-five percent more participation in all of our National Honor Societies this year, so yay! Which was really nice. I am on the board of all of our National Honor Societies, so it was nice to, like, see all of the applications, and a lot of kids, um, are more interested in all of them, not just going only into math or only into just general National Honor Society, but being in all of the ones available to them. Um, we have been planning our test prep nights, which will be in February, and they are for the SAT and for park testing, um, math and, um, English. And the, we had a school-wide door decorating contest. We don't do trees at Y-Hi, we do doors, 'cause our school is covered in doors. So, um, teachers get to decorate their door with any kind of holiday theme they want. Sometimes teachers pick it, sometimes students pick it. I did not get to participate this year, 'cause my teachers chose not to do it. Um, but it is so much fun to see some teachers do hallways, like, all the teachers collaborate together and do their entire hallway of, like, a certain movie or song or something, and it's super cool. Um, students and teachers vote. I, we do it on Thursday, and then the teacher and the students get a prize, which is really nice. Um, yeah, that's all I have. Does anyone have any questions?
I, I, I do, Katie, if you don't mind, and you don't have to answer this, you can come back at, at me later, but, uh, on respect in the classroom, what, what types of things have you discussed, and what types of actions have you, uh, you've come up with?
Of course. Um, in my class period that I specifically had to talk to about was in Calc II, um, and there's not many people in our, in my Calc II class, and a lot of them are from other schools. Um, so it's interesting to see their input on it as well, because they do not have the same, like, the same programs that we do at Y-Hi. Um, so we specifically talked about, like, when it's appropriate to leave the classroom, like, if your teacher has a certain policy of, like, going to the bathroom, getting water. Like, the ten-ten program, like, we obviously follow that as school-wide, but some teachers, um, have, like, you have to ask, you have to ask when to go. My Calc II teacher is not one of those teachers. He says, if you have to ask, it's probably not appropriate. So if you feel it's appropriate to leave, leave. Sign out, take the pass. Um, so we talked about doing that. Also, talking over people, um, we do a lot of group activities in my Calc II class, and also student presenting. He believes in, if you get it well enough, you can present it to the class, and if you don't, you should still present, 'cause then you know what you're struggling on and what you can and cannot do. Um, so just, like, general respect for the, for all the students in the classroom and for student-teacher relationships as well.
Thank you.
Of course.
Any other questions? Thanks, Katie. Uh, next on the agenda is, uh, let me see where I, here.
Public comments.
Public comments, yes, thank you. We didn't have any signups for public comments. Uh, are there any from those that are present? Okay. Superintendent Report, Dr. Hanlon.
Okay, we have just a few things. Um, the first thing has to do with discipline and school climate. Um, as the board knows, through your, um, collaboration, we developed four vision points for moving forward, and one of those, one of the areas of focus that we believe is so important is ensuring safe schools and productive school climate. So in that, um, with that, through that lens, I wanna talk about a couple of things. First of all, I wanna remind the board and the public that we are currently in the midst of a school climate survey, gathering feedback through this Friday from parents, from teachers, from students about climate in schools, and that, um, feedback will provide valuable information to us on specific strategies that we need to move forward with, um, by, specifically by school in some cases. So, um, that's one initiative. I also wanna report back to the board on, um, the Superintendent's Task Force on Student Discipline that was formed last spring by Dr. Fredrickson. There was a, um, great group of individuals that came together last spring and continued through this fall, looking at discipline in the schools. There were teachers, um, administrators, parents, community members who, um, participated. Mr. Ollinger, and I believe that Mrs., before that, Mrs. Hudson, um, represented the board on that group, and that committee broke up. You have before you just a very, um, looks like a long summary, but it's really just the first page, and then I'll explain what the document is that you have in the back. But the first page provides for you a basic summary of the recommendations that came to me from that task force. Those four, the four groups that the task force divided into were alternative education, cellphone impact on student discipline, lateness and class cutting, and progressive discipline and behavior interventions. Those were the four areas that I understand that through, um, Mrs. Jones and Mr. Stauffer, they divided into those groups as generated by the group themselves as important topics. So in the area of alternative education, I'm not gonna read you this, you can, um, read the details on your own, but basically, one of the strong recommendations is we need to look at what we are offering in the, at the elementary level. We have our Choices Program in the secondary level, but there very well are students in our elementary schools that need some kind of alternative placements for whatever behaviors or, um, issues that they're having. So we are looking at that, um, currently. And then the second area that they looked at, which I really, um, appreciated, it's, it's an area that I think a lot about, and that is enhancing workforce readiness programs, making sure that what we're, that the, the instructional programs that we have in our schools are engaging to students and specifically tied to careers, so that students see the purpose of why they're in school and see the light at the end of the tunnel, especially for some of our more challenging students who just really aren't sure why they're there. Um, so we are, again, we're looking at that. We're at the very beginning stages of, um, exploring an opportunity through Beacon at Salisbury University through Memo Deriker and his research group are looking at a, a program to offer. It's, this is Eastern Shore Superintendent, so it's all counties on the eastern shore, but it's specific to the local school system, where we're looking at what industries in our community may be lacking individuals to go into careers that they are, or jobs that they're looking for, and how can we, as a public school system, assist in those pathways through internships and that sort of thing. So we're at the very beginning stages of that. Brian Ashby, um, is, um, has been tapped as a worker bee, if you will, to work with among his peers of CTE supervisors across the eastern shore, the nine counties of the eastern shore, looking at that program with Salisbury University. So I'm excited about that. That's, that's one, um, initiative that we have, again, in, in its infancy. Um, the cellphone, uh, issue, that, that subgroup really put into place even before school started, some recommendations about how to streamline the disciplinary actions related to cellphone use, and their recommendation is continue, continuing to clearly articulate what those expectations are and enforce, um, enforce those expectations. Lateness and class cutting, that group came up with a couple of good suggestions. We're currently, um, taking a look at both of those suggestions, having to do with, um, looking at students who may lose opportunities because of lateness and class cutting and extracurricular activities. So, uh, we're currently looking at some research on just how many of our students would actually be impacted by that response. So, um, that's in that area. And then the final area was the progressive discipline and behavior management. That group decided that they really wanted to go back and look at the document that you see attached to that bulleted list, and that is a document that was created, I believe, a few years ago, on Classroom Management Best Practices Guides and Administrative Best Practices for Discipline in Schools, a long title for that guide, but, um, you can see, um, again, I'm not gonna read you the changes that they made. They went through and made some edits to that document. I think probably the most important edits that they have come up with, that we, that we, um, concur with are the edits that had to do with providing more detail, like, in, for instance, um, the area of establishing routines in your classroom, rather than just saying to teachers, establish routines. They've given them a little bit more detail in that area about what does that really mean, um, and so forth. So that's, um, that's where we are on that. We, as I said, we are currently looking at all of those recommendations, which I think are all really good recommendations, and moving forward with those. Um, I certainly appreciate the work of that group, and once we have the, the school climate, um, survey results analyzed and have determined some of our next steps, then we could very well be bringing together again another task force, an advisory committee, um, to continue our work in school climate, because it is an ongoing effort. Any questions on that?
When do you expect that the survey complete?
The survey is, the, the window closes this Friday, and then, um, we have engaged with, um, some consultants who are, have some expertise in this area, who are doing the data analytics, and they'll be, um, providing that information back to us after the first of the year. We're hoping to be able to present some information back to principals in January.
Uh, just a couple of comments, 'cause I participated, but, uh, just two things that really caught my eye that I was not really aware of, and that is, uh, you know, students, they're not interested in going to college, you know? They're not interested in learning Algebra II, some students Algebra II or some of these other things, or Algebra. So what is it that we have to offer these students? What pathways, you know, to make them a, and a student that graduates and has a, uh, a good, or has opportunity when they graduate and what, uh, careers they might enter into? The second thing had to do with cell phones, and I guess the message there that I kept hearing over and over is be consistent and be persistent. And I know they can, teachers can wear you down. I've talked to some of them, and they said, boy, you know, by the end of the year, you're just worn down, but I would just encourage everyone to be consistent and persistent. So, thanks.
Uh, the second thing I just, is an update for you, and that is, I, I believe last spring you worked with this, or you gave approval to move forward to ask for annexation for West Salisbury Elementary School to the city, which would help us with tapping into utilities. They, they approved that last night at their, um, city council meeting, so. Um, that is, just wanted to bring closure to that. Mr. Fitzgerald will be signing a document that will bring closure to that. So that is good news, and we appreciate the support of the city. And last but not least, I know she was afraid I was gonna forget her, Courtney Jones, our grant specialist.
Um, one to the Rotary Club, four to the Dart Foundation, and one for Fuel Up to Play Sixty. And you can read down through there, um, with the different programs and the schools that they will be, um, that submitted them. We did have five grants funded in November totaling two-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand, three-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars and ninety-five cents, two from the Maryland State Department of Education, two from the Community Foundation of the Eastern Shore, um, which I was very excited about. Um, this was an additional five-hundred dollars on top of what the schools had already received from the, um, Calcott, Mary Gay Calcott Award. And we also received the, the Donnie Williams Foundation, um, grant that was presented at the last board meeting. We did have two grants that were not funded in November totaling ten thousand dollars. Um, one from the Dart Foundation and one from the Franklin P. and Arthur W. Purdue Foundation. Um, funds, amount funded from our, from the State Department totals one million, five-hundred-and-nine-thousand, three-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars and ninety-five cents. Non-state grant funds total four-hundred-and-six-thousand, two-hundred-and-thirteen dollars and sixteen cents. Total funds requested, um, total three million, thirty-four thousand, thirty-eight dollars and twenty-three cents, and the amount funded, um, as of the end of November was one million, nine-hundred-and-fifteen dollars. I'm sorry, one million, nine-hundred-and-fifteen, five-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars and eleven cents. And I stand for any questions?
Keep requesting, even though we only had, uh, a third or better, two-thirds of what we requested funded, uh, keep requesting.
Definitely.
Two-thirds is absolutely significant amount of money that we would not have were it not for the help given through these grants, and, uh, we are so appreciative of the fact that people are helping our education system in this way.
Very much so. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have, uh, four, I guess it's four point one, which is approval of the meeting, the regular meeting of November fifteenth. Do I hear a motion to accept the minutes as presented?
So moved.
Second, anyone?
Second.
Those in favor of accepting the minutes? Vote by, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Five point, yeah, is this? Five point one through five point nine is, uh, consent items, and, uh, what we do, these are items that we've reviewed, we've done our homework as a board, and, uh, what we do is rather than go through each and every one of them, we approve them as a, as one item. But if anybody has any questions on any of these items, feel free to ask for more information. Or anybody care to get some more detail on any of these?
Joe, I would just ask about item five-two and five-three, which are both, uh, second reading items, uh, whether there have been any questions raised by anyone in the public regarding either two of these additional Photoshop, uh, books that have been available for, uh, public review for a month now? Uh, any questions been raised or any comments? Okay, thank you very much. That's my question.
Any other questions? Okay, five point nine to approve the.
Uh, could I ask one other question about five point five? This is a contract award for grand piano, uh, and this is to be placed in the James M. Bennett Auditorium. Nikki, you don't mean to tell me my voice is not loud enough? Mr. Fitzgerald, tell him to turn his hearing aid up a little bit.
You know you're not on mute, right?
Bound to hear you.
This is for James M. Bennett Auditorium, is that correct? Okay, they're getting the new piano in, and the grand piano in the auditorium area.
From the floods.
That's what I, but that, that answers my question. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Okay, let me try this again. Five point nine, approval of the consent items. Are there any other questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. All right, uh, six point one is the school calendar. Dr. Townsend.
Tracy, as you recall, last month you, for first reading, you did the draft calendar for post-Labor Day. Thank you. None of us are behaving, are we, Nikki? And so Tracy put that back out for public comment, and as you can see from the file that is attached to your document, we had 37 people who commented on the post-Labor Day. Some were just reiterating that they were in favor of the post-Labor Day, others gave reasons why they're in favor of that. And then also in that same document, we had others who, I think it was 13, people who commented supporting the pre-Labor Day comment, or calendar. Some of those comments were, again, repeats, you know, concerns about daycare and that sort of thing. But again, it was three times as many people were in favor of the post-Labor Day calendar as were pre-Labor Day calendar. So we're asking for final approval of the post-Labor Day calendar at this meeting.
I would just comment, Kathy, and I appreciate all the work that's been done with gathering this input. And it's certainly clear to me, as a board member, that the post-Labor Day calendar is the one most desired in our community from input we receive. But I do believe, as we've read the comments of those who were supporting pre-Labor Day calendar, that their concerns are certainly valid in terms of how it may affect our summer remediation and enrichment programs in terms of adjustments I think we, as a school system, will have to make. And I believe it behooves us to make those adjustments, because those programs are vital to students, and even more so when we talk about the summer slide. And those who aren't in education don't realize how evident that is to those who teach, in terms of what is lost during the summer, which affected some of the scores we saw in our presentation about student readiness when we looked in the fall of the year or their return to school. So we really must, if we're going with the post-Labor Day calendar, we must, I think, as a board, look at how we are going to be able to readjust our summer programs, particularly those that meet the needs of students in the remedial ways, but also those students who get a lot of enrichment activities during those summer programs. So I think that's certainly something we're going to have to put on our agenda.
Okay, do I hear a motion to accept the post-Labor Day calendar?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any other comments, discussions? All those in favor? Vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Textbook for Teacher Academy, this is 6.2, and this will be presented by Brian Ashby. Hello, Brian.
I am not Brian Ashby. He is unable to be here.
Looks a lot like Ruth Malone to me.
During the Curriculum Council meeting in November, we examined the textbook that is recommended by the Maryland State Department of Education for those school systems who are involved in TAM, which stands for the Teaching Teacher Academy of Maryland. This is a career technology education program. It is new for us this year, and it exists in all four of our high schools. It is a program designed for those students who want to pursue education and specifically teaching as a career. And so we have a number of students at each of our high schools who are in this program. All of our students are ninth graders, and they will be following a four-year sequence. The book that we are bringing before you today is Those Who Can Teach. This is the book that most closely aligns to the curriculum, the program of study that we are required to use for this particular program, CTE program. But we reviewed it like any other textbook. We did not simply say, oh, this is the required textbook, this is the suggested textbook, ergo it will be the textbook we use. We did send it through the evaluation process, which included students, students who are in our TAM program. It included parents. It also included two individuals from our Institutes of Higher Learning, those in the Education Department, one from Warwick and one from Salisbury University. They all agree that this is an excellent textbook and will serve our students' needs. In fact, one of them said, and this was one of our higher ed partners, said, wow, this would have really helped me in my beginning study of how to be a teacher when I was in college. So this comes highly recommended. It was reviewed by the Curriculum Council, and they gave their thumbs up and sent it on for your consideration. It has been since that Curriculum Council meeting, it has been available for public comment at our central office, though there has been no additional public comment, and we present it to you today for first reading.
I guess I'm supposed to read this. Mr. Willie didn't prompt me on this, but anyway.
Well, I've done my share of needing a discussion here. You can feel free to go ahead.
During the November meeting of the Curriculum Council, the selection of a textbook and title for Those Who Can Teach was reviewed. This text is for use in our Teacher Academy of Maryland TAM program as part of the CTA off, CTE offering. It aligns to the standards established in the program of study and is the preferred text according to MSDE for TAM. The council unanimously recommended that the text move forward to the Board of Education for consideration and approval. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, is there a motion to approve this text for first reading?
I move that we approve the text.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any further discussion or questions?
Ruth, I would just comment, I was able to sit in on Curriculum Council when this book was discussed, and I did benefit from the discussion. The content is certainly dear to my heart, and I found the book to be well done. I was taken back by the cost of it. But then when you announced that that was being covered through grant money and not coming out of our budget, I felt a little better about the whole situation. But it is a good book, and anything we can do to give a more realistic picture to students as to what being a classroom teacher entails is a good thing. And I believe I felt that way in looking at the book, but I, reading these comments from others, it says the same thing. And when you look at, you know, fives being given again and again, you can't get a higher score than five on a book that we review, I think it says that people do believe this is a worthy purchase and a worthy addition to our curriculum.
Thank you, Mr. Willie. I would mention that one of the things that took all of us aback was the cost of this book. It is a college-level text, and one of the issues in the education world is the cost of those textbooks that colleges use. And so it is a reflection. You can see that it is a paperback, it is not a hardback book, but it is an expensive one. Fortunately, we do have Perkins Funds, and as an approved program of study, it will qualify under those Perkins Funds, so that will be how we will cover the cost of this book.
Good.
Any other questions?
And this is first reading. I just, I know I say this again and again, but I do think it's important for those who were, who weren't able to come today and are watching, that this book is available for review for a month, because we won't do second reading until our next meeting for final approval. So anyone who'd like to see this book and how it addresses teaching in the classroom and why people teach, they're welcome to come and see that at our Board of Education office. Is that correct?
That is absolutely correct. And in fact, it has been on preview for the month between Curriculum Council and today's meeting as well.
Good.
So that there is an extended period of time, a significant period of time that exists for the public to preview any book or any curriculum that we bring forward for consideration. In this case, all they would need to do is come to our central office, and I will be delighted to share this book with them.
Thank you, Ruth.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, I guess we don't vote on this to approve for the first reading. Okay. All those in favor of accepting the recommendation, the superintendent, to approve this text, signify by saying aye.
For first reading, yes.
For first reading, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. All right, thanks, Mrs. Malone.
Thank you.
I believe you're here. Okay. Item 6.3, this is approval for the ITEA Advanced Design Application Course to Replace the Current Advanced Technology Electives. This, too, is a first reading. During the November meeting of the Curriculum Council, a proposal to replace our current four-course sequence in advanced technology was reviewed. The courses would be replaced by a single year-long course developed by the International Technology Education Association, ITEA, entitled Advanced Design Applications. The council reviewed the curriculum material that are aligned with the standards established by the ITEA and adopted by MSDE as meeting the requirements for the advanced technology complete program in high school. The anticipated implementation of the new course would begin with the 2017-2018 school year. The council unanimously recommended that this proposal move forward to the Board of Education for consideration and approval. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, is there a motion to approve the Advanced Design Application Course for first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, questions and comments?
Thank you so much. Again, I am not Brian Ashby, I'm Ruth Malone. He was unable to be here today, but it is my pleasure and honor to stand in his stead with this particular course. The state of Maryland requires that all students, as a graduation requirement, requires that students have a completer program. They may be an academic completer, they may be a career technology completer, they can be a business completer, or they can be an advanced technology completer. Currently, an advanced technology completer in our school system takes a series of four courses: manufacturing technologies, construction technology, communication technology, and transportation technology. They are four separate courses, each of them lasting a semester, each of them being a half credit, thus getting two credits in advanced technology. We would like to redesign that course offering to more closely mirror the program of study suggested by MSDE, and frankly, to better align with our new technology standards. The ITEA curriculum is a pre-designed curriculum, though it, and it is an online curriculum, not an online delivery, but the resources are online for our teachers. But it does allow for teachers to modify those, to rewrite those, to adjust those for our students. This particular course, Advanced Design Applications, would replace three of our four courses. It would replace manufacturing, construction, and transportation. It is a very well-designed course. It is hands-on, it is interactive. We have been working and piloting components of this for some time, and we really do think it will meet the needs of our students in this particular completer program. And so it is with a great deal of confidence that we bring this particular redesigned course and curriculum to you for consideration today.
I attended the Curriculum Council to review this particular course, and I was very impressed with what's been offered and what's been approved by ITEA and MSDE. So I look forward to seeing other courses that are available through the same, the same source. But it is very well-done, and I think one of the things that, in the discussions, that was made it a very strong offering, is that you can customize portions of it, so you don't have to go with what is delivered. You can make the alterations yourself. Are there any other comments or questions for Mrs. Malone?
I would just like to comment, and I've been looking for the name of the award to be able to tell you, but the reason that Brian is not here with us today is because he is out of town in Nashville, in Nashville, Tennessee, receiving an award for the work that he did. I believe I sent you the information early on, like at the end of the summer, about this award that he and Erwin Steerman, otherwise known by Stosh, did together on our stadium, looking at safety and the facility of our county stadium. And I think that, it's my understanding, my recollection, that they did such a fine job. They asked him to put the report in, in report form, and so they're being recognized last evening, I believe, in Nashville, Tennessee. So we're very proud of Brian and Stosh.
Great job.
It is a remarkable feat. I had the opportunity to review the, the report and the article, and it is very impressive.
Very good. All right, all those, are there any other questions or comments?
Call for the vote.
Yes. Is there, well, we already have the motion, but all those in favor of accepting the Advanced Design Application Course for its first reading, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
6.4, approval for the novel entitled Booked to be used as, as a one-school, one-book at Bennett Middle School. First reading, during the November meeting of the Curriculum Council, the novel entitled Booked was reviewed. Bennett Middle School would like to use this book for a one-school, one-book initiative during the second semester of this year. If approved, it would also be placed on the approved list of novel, novels at middle schools. The council unanimously recommended that the novel move forward to the Board of Education for consideration and approval. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, is there a motion to approve Booked for the first reading?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Mrs. Hastings?
Yes. So this is the book called Booked.
She's a big, big fan of this author, too.
I love Kwame Alexander. This is actually my signed copy. He actually won a Newberry Medal for another book that he wrote that's also geared toward middle schoolers called The Crossover. The very interesting thing, I think, about this book is the entire novel is told in verse, so it's one big poem. So it's a challenge to get middle schoolers to like to read, it's an even bigger challenge to get them to like poetry, and this book really does it, both of those. Yes, absolutely. The neat thing about this book is, like I said, it's one big poem, but it really hits all of the middle schoolers' interests and also is very relatable, I believe, because it talks about sports. The young man who is the main character in the story is dealing with the divorce of his parents, which unfortunately several of our students go through. There's bullying that he deals with, and just a lot of peer pressure. So again, it's very relatable. I think it will be a fun book, and what we would like to do at the end, after the entire school, and that's faculty, staff, and students reads this book, is we want to have a poetry slam. So again, just further interesting our students in poetry and literacy as a whole.
Any questions?
Any questions for Mrs. Hastings? Any comments?
I think it's appropriate you bring that book at this meeting after we focused on our earlier presentation and about reading, the need for literacy, and you talk about this book focusing on that and also making students see reading in a different light because of the manner in which it's done. It certainly is a good addition for your- because of the manner in which it's done. It certainly is a, a good addition for your school to focus on, I think.
Okay. All those in favor of accepting "Booked" for the first reading, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, very good. Thanks, Mrs. Hastings. Mrs. Malone, could you just pass that book along, too, so we could just take a look at that? But also, if you could comment about the text for the, the Advanced Design Application Course?
That particular curriculum is not in print form, but is online. It is available for preview as well. And any member of the public, any member of the board, we would be happy to put you together with Brian Ashby, who can bring that up. It is password-protected, but he will be delighted to show anyone so that they can see all of the curriculum materials. So, thank you very much.
Right. I just wanted to make sure we understood
Absolutely.
How you can review the, the text for that course. Thanks. West Salisbury Elementary Con, Contract Amendment. And we have Matt Aki here.
Representing Lisa, who's cheering for Brian.
She's in, she's in Nashville.
Yeah, she's cheering.
I don't blame her.
Good afternoon again. I think it might have been morning last time I saw you. Do you have to say anything else, or do you may go ahead?
I'm sorry. I guess I'm, here I go. Mr. Willie's letting me down. I'm so, I'm pretty forgetful.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I'm old, Joe. You gotta remember how old I am.
We got these two old guys here trying to figure out how to get through this. Anyway, we need Don back. Is there a motion to authorize the issuance of a contract amendment to the firm of Whiting Turner Contracting Company to incorporate the guaranteed maximum price, GMP, into the contract for the construction of the West Salisbury project as recommended by the superintendent and the School Building Commission? Amendment number one, in the amount of twenty-four thou, I'm sorry, twenty-four million, one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, one hundred dollars. Includes the base GMP and the selected alternatives. Value of the recommended alternatives is six hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
All right. I think the last time we brought West Salisbury to this group, we were slightly over budget, but very optimistic. And since that time, we have bid the job for real, and we did come in within budget. Maybe not quite as low as we had hoped, so we can get all of our alternates, but we were able to select quite a few of them, and strategically, strategically selected the ones we did based on how we could affect the students, the most students possible. So, alongside of me is Scott Saxman from Whiting Turner, in case we have any specific questions with the, the numbers. But on December 5th, we vetted the whole contract, as well as went through every alternate and why we selected them with the School Building Commission and with their recommendation. Dr. Hanlon's were coming forth to, for approval to proceed.
Scott, you, would you just comment about the polished concrete alternate? We have some experience with that, and you have good feelings about it, I believe. Can you share with us? That's one of the alternates showing here.
Sure. That was one of the alternates that actually isn't being selected because of the, the cost. We always knew that we were pretty tight on budget with, with this project, so we were able to, we put that as an alternate, you know, and we've talked a lot about it. And I know Dr. Townsend is a big fan of it, because it does save money on the maintenance side. But the upfront cost in this one was fairly high, and unlike Bennett Middle School or Bennett High School, it's not as extensive as it was in those, those buildings. And the classrooms also have VCT, so they, they were already kind of having to do that level of maintenance for it. So, given the high upfront cost, I think it was the, the decision of the, the staff and the School Building Commission that they would not accept this alternate, because if you took this one, it eliminated the possibility of some other alternates that were viewed as very important.
We have experience with it.
Yes.
Was my point, because we have it in other places, and it's a pay-me-now-or-pay-me-later kind of thing, because it costs more initially, but the cost of upkeep in years to come or maintenance for it saves us money, or at least that's what we hear is true and believe will happen, and I hope our experience is proving that to be true.
It is.
So, that's why I raised the question.
Sure.
Well, I had been pretty adamant about the polished concrete in School Building Commission, but then as it turned out, the way all the numbers shook out and having to reduce the cost by fifteen percent and all of the things historically that have happened with West Salisbury, there were several alternates that, as it turned out, and looking in the big scheme of things, they were more important than, in this particular case, than the polished concrete. But you're right, it has, has proven to be a really valuable thing, and in any schools going forward, I would really recommend that we continue with the focus on polished concrete.
Any other questions, comments?
The Building Commission has reviewed this, and the superintendent, and both are as supportive of these recommendations. Is that what I've been meaning here?
Yeah, it says the superintendent and the School Building Commission has recommended this.
Yes.
All right. All those in favor of authorizing the issuance of these contract amendments, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. All right. Parkside High, Parkside High Module Building Contract Modification. Pursuant to the recommendation of the superintendent and the project engineer, is there a motion to authorize the issuance of a contract modification to the CM for, firm of Whiting Turner Incorporated for the revisions necessary to connect the existing sidewalks to the new sidewalks between Parkside High School and the modular building and the associated stormwater management per the attached change modification, which is a total of twenty-six thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Second. Okay.
So, this one's kind of straightforward. Modular complex was obviously placed almost a year ago, and since that time, we've started putting together systemic projects that are about to commence. And in doing this, we've put a lot of work in with, working with the principal and the school staff to make sure we can safely get our students from inside the school out to the modular, and making sure the paths are wide enough and to get them back and forth between periods in an accurate seven minutes, I think it is. So, we actually walked the site several times, and in doing so, kind of found some constraints, and while we did that, we decided it would behoove us to add some sidewalks. And in doing that, it affected some of the stormwater management. So, these are just changes that kind of evolved with the process and standard when we do these types of things. It is our hopes that there will be funds left over at the end of the project to recoup this money. However, we're about to occupy this building come Friday. We're starting our move, so we can't wait to the end of the project to make these changes, because we're going to be using it by then. So, that's why it's a change order instead of waiting to use contingency money. That's all.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Is this gone before the School Building Commission?
I think we, do we mention that last?
Or is this something we just need to do right away?
I don't think it came up at the last School Building Commission.
I don't think it did, but I think for safety concerns, that, and, and we're positive that there'll be money at the end with the contingency money, but for safety concerns, this is really something that needs to be done.
And Dr. Hanlon, I'm making assumption, assumption that you are supportive of this. Is that a correct assumption? I call for the, for the question.
Okay. Let's see. Okay. Those in favor of, those in favor to authorize the issuance of a contract modification to the CM firm of Whiting Turner Incorporated, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
6.7. Personnel Matters. Mr. Paddock.
It's just information.
Just information.
Right.
Okay. All right. Board Member Reports. I'm sorry, Board, yes, Board Member Reports. Mr. Palmer, you want to start it off?
Joe, I went to a, a meeting, Hellbody County Executive, two Thursdays ago, it was on the, the, the budget, in which he, it was for capital projects, and Mr. Culver was asked by one of the county councilmen to explain the portion, I believe it was fourteen-some million dollars, to explain that portion to the public. And Mr. Culver was able to explain that, each part of it, to the, to the public. So, I was, I was impressed by that.
Okay. Very good. Thanks, Mr. Palmer. To Willie.
At our last meeting, I gave an invitation to everybody watching to visit the schools for American Education Week. I was hoping tonight we'd get a kind of report on what kind of a visitation we had. I'm looking at Dr. Handy, and she's kind of, kind of saying, I don't have that right now, but...
I sent that to you in your update.
I'm sorry?
I believe I sent that to you in your update.
Did you? Okay. Then, my bad. How was it? Was it good?
I believe it was down slightly, but still good.
Still good.
Still good. Yes.
Well, I'm glad to hear that. I just, I am an advocate of having parents come to see what's happening in our schools, and I just would make the point that American Education Week is not the only time that you can visit, that you're welcome to come. Just make sure you get yourself checked in and let the people know. It, it is your school. This is a public school, and they're welcome to visit us. And something happening in your child's classroom, why don't you show up and be a part of it? And not only will your child love it, but teachers will be impressed that you care enough to come to see what kind of lesson they have prepared. So, American Education Week is over, but the invitation to visit continues.
Mr. Malone?
Yes. Piggybacking on that, I visited North Salisbury School along with Dr. Hanlon, Dr. Handy. Mrs. Jones was there. We, there was a program where the youth worked with World War II veterans, and then they presented their information, and then we heard from the veterans, which was very entertaining, particularly one gentleman was very entertaining. But the whole involvement with the students and members of the community was wonderful. And I happen to know one of the veterans, Mr. Parker, and he was, I saw him Saturday by coincidence, and he couldn't say enough about how much he enjoyed it and being included. So, each meeting and each event I attend, it becomes clearer to me what my role on the school board should be, and that's, we're out in the community a lot. We need to get the word out about what we, what the community should be doing. There's stakeholders, what we need from them, not only financially, but in contributions, like to Mrs. Greenwood's work here, to reading to your children every night, to getting them prepared for school, watch what your children are doing, doing their homework, et cetera. So, and just reading. And in reading, I read a quote in the book that, that Ruth Malone passed around, "Far and away the best prize that life offers is the chance to work hard at work worth doing," which is Teddy Roosevelt. So, it's, that's what we should be doing as school board members, is we need to work hard at this work, because it's worth doing. Our students will graduate and become great citizens if we focus on the right things. So, I appreciate the opportunity, appreciate the work that all of you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Maria's been under the weather for a few weeks, and I can understand. Hey, it's December 2016, and in two years, December 2018, guess what happens? An elected school board will be sitting up here, and that will be a whole new balkan. And I think we should be aware of that. And with that in mind, I think the board, or the members of the board, should start defining what we think the issues are. We should help identify the issues, so that people, when they're running for office, they may not know as much as we do on what those issues are, and we should make that public. And I'm going to start today to bring up some issues that I think the elected candidates, people that are considering running, and I hope there's some public out there that would listen to this. But just let me back up a bit. The election for the new school board will be in November of 2018, so there will be campaigning probably, you know, possibly for as much as twelve months, six months, to run for the, the Board of Education. So, after the election, a month later is when they, they will then sit in as school board members. So, some of the issues that I think, that I, I would like to see addressed while I'm on the board, or elected school boards might take into consideration, is redistricting. You know, I think that's a big issue, and if it doesn't get done by December of 2018, I would recommend that anybody that runs for office, that they take that up as an issue, of whether they think it should be done or shouldn't be done. I'm also in favor of uniforms, and I think that is another issue that can be considered. Based on what I read, I think there's a lot of benefits to having uniforms in our school system. Choices, and I know Mr. Palmer has brought this up, this is near and dear to his heart, that he feels the facilities that we have for choices are not good enough, and I agree with Mr. Palmer. And I think we should have better facilities for our choices. Again, another, another issue that can be taken up by somebody running for office. Common Core. I was, I was really neutral on Common Core. I didn't know that much about it, but I am in favor of Common Core, and I hope it continues. I think there's been some very good outcomes. And I see Mr. Palmer shaking his head, but again, that's an issue that needs to be debated and talked about by the people that run for the Board of Ed. Charter schools. I don't know if you're aware of it, but the new Secretary of Education, or the person that's been nominated for the Secretary of Education, her name is DeVois, I believe. She's from Detroit, and she has advocated for charter schools. I'm not in favor of charter schools, okay? But there might be candidates that emerge that are in favor of charter schools, where they think it's a good idea. I see Mr. Palmer laughing over there. I don't know if he's in favor of charter schools. That's a possibility. I think there should be more transparency. I think some of the things that we talk about on this board in closed session, I really question, you know, shouldn't this be an open session? So, I, I think any member that's, or anybody running for the board might want to consider that. So, I would like to invite my board members, not today, but in the future, to talk about issues that candidates can take up and consider and to run with, and create a discussion in our community about these, these issues. So, thank you. All right, Mr. Fitzgerald, we're fifteen minutes late. I'm sorry. We stand in a German, or do I have to ask for a motion?
I tried to move him along, Don. I'm sorry.
He did? Oh. Please thank everyone for me. Okay. Very good.
He was watching.
We stand in German. Okay. Thank you.